Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. We have a quorum. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 20th, 2012. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held June 5th, 2012, July 3rd, 2012, and August 7th, 2012. Item C is approve observance of Wednesday, October 31st, 2012, as Halloween trick-or-treat night. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $1,514,294.54.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Any questions to the claims? Any changes or notes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Would the minutes reflect that? Councilman Kraus is now here. Item three. I'll give you a minute to set up.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Are you sure? Okay.
It's short, I haven't realized.
Okay. Item three is consider approval of ordinance number 724-12, amending Part Five, Chapter Three, Article A, Section 5-204 by adopting the 2009 International Residential Code.
Mayor and council, this item is updating our current residential code from 2006 to 2009. We do prefer to stay about three years behind the actual building code year in Moore simply just to let the other communities work out the items that may not work or that may could be done better. However, this year is a little unusual in that this is our first time that the state of Oklahoma has officially adopted 2009 as a minimum building code standard for the entire state. So we are required now to adopt the 2009, which it was time anyways. The state of Oklahoma does allow the cities to make amendments to the code like we always have done. So the item that you have in front of you does have certain amendments to the code. We did present this to the home builders in Moore two to three times. We've talked with them about the different amendments. We believe that this is a good product that everyone can live with for the next several years. And I do have Shane Spiegel here tonight. He's our new building official, and he was the one who met with the home builders and the contractors to get these items worked out. So if you have any questions, he would be happy to answer them.
You may have any questions? Okay. So we have to adopt it?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
It's not only that we have to, but we need to go ahead and adopt it because we're behind what the current building codes minimum standards for the state is, and it has caused a little bit of confusion of late recently in terms of one subcontractor or builder looking at one code and another one being aware that the state is requiring an updated code. So it just gets us in sync with what the other cities in the metro are doing already.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No? Would you call for the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four, we've been asked to table this item, is consider ordinance number 72612 relating to wreckers and towing services, amending Part Nine, Chapter 12 by deleting Sections Nine through 12-10 entitled Parking Police.
Make a motion to table this item?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please? We have a motion and a second.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carry. Item is tabled, excuse me. Item number five is consider approval of a contract with Vero, Patty Banks and Associates in the amount of $24,000 to prepare renderings of improvements proposed in our parks, our future propositions.
Mayor, what we're asking for here is to approve a contract with the entity, Patty Banks and Associates was the entity that did our parks master plan. We feel like that we need to be able to visually show particularly on the proposed new park, which is the general obligation bond issue, we need to be able to visually be able to show the citizens and voters what it is that they're going to be voting on. It's a, it is a little bit of an expenditure, but we feel strongly that we need to inform our citizens about what they're going to be voting on. We'll have a series of public meetings, there'll be some mailings, we'll have brochures printed, a lot of that sort of thing. But again, this will allow us to have some of, I think it's going to include some video, short video and some renderings and some presentations about what the new proposed park will look like, and then some typical renderings of some of the other parks that improvements that will be proposed in the other parks. As you know, we can't spend money to advocate people or asking people to vote yes on this, but again, we feel that it's our responsibility to inform them of what we're asking them to do, so.
Now, was this in the original contract that we did with them?
With them?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Okay. Because a long time ago, about 17 years ago, we had a, we passed a resolution, the council did, that we would actually prefer, if we could, to put out for proposals or bids or whatever, preferences to local businesses because we ask our citizens to shop local, and we just felt like we should do the same.
Mm-hmm.
And people that are members of the chamber, they pay taxes, they pay our water sewer bills a whole bit, but we haven't really done that. So should we put this out for proposal?
It would be hard for somebody locally.
That's my question.
To come in behind what the work they've already done, so I don't think it'd be practical.
Okay. Because it's a lot of money, that's a new police car.
They, they, they worked on the fire department, police department plans too, didn't they?
No, just the, the parks master plan.
Okay. I thought they did something else for us too.
No.
Okay.
So I'm just laying it out there.
Timing is a, would be a bit of an issue with that even yet, even if we would have, you know, started that a while ago as far as proposals. They're familiar with, with what's being proposed.
Yeah, the election would be here upon us before another group could even put maybe a plan.
It'd be very difficult to.
That's less than eight weeks away.
Okay. My next question goes to Randy. Randy, can we legally do that since it's a preparation for a bond proposal?
Yes.
We can spend the money to do that? Okay. All right.
I have a question. Could you tell me a little bit more about what we get? I was just reading through it and it talks about aerial view. Is this going to be new aerial views? Are there going to be old ones and just these projects placed in over?
Councilmember Ham, what we'll get are several things. We'll get aerial view, an angle view, if you will, of the Central Moore Park that shows its major components, a community center, pool, farmer's market, and the amphitheater. We'll also get a rendering of Parmley Park, which is a new park, and then we'll also get a rendering of the improvements at Veterans Park. And then, as Steve mentioned, we'll also get images of improvements that we'll make to existing parks, as an example playgrounds, shade structures, perhaps walking trails, pavilions, so that people, when they make a decision about this, it's an informed decision about, okay, these are the kinds of things that we're going to get.
It's good. It'll take existing aerial photography that they have or that we have, and it'll superimpose a kind of an oblique or a, what it would look like maybe if you were flying a plane pretty low and looking at what this community center, pool area, amphitheater area and all that would look like, say from Broadway for help.
Now, we saw these pictures, or we saw a picture in a meeting earlier, did we not?
No. What we saw was, no, it was a bubble diagram, but it was straight down and it wasn't proportioned right. It just basically showed the components.
Okay. There was no specificity to it per se. Okay.
Is this a fair price, Mr. Eadie, I guess?
Well, yes, I mean, we, I don't think we would submit anything to you that we didn't think was a fair price.
Where's it going to be displayed? What, what are we going to, once we have the?
We'll use the diagrams that they come up with. We'll use that in the brochures and various things that we have available, that we put out to the public in the mailhouse that we do, we'll use those. We'll use the video part of it, that'll be on a, on a video that we'll put on Channel 20.
Thank you. I'm still not sure if you put that on a brochure, that you're not actually soliciting for the bid, I mean, for the vote.
I think you're looking at more as informational, I would think.
We've, we've done informational brochures on all of our bond issues and all the sales tax issues that we've done. Again, you have to, there's a line there that you can't cross in terms of asking or encouraging people to vote one way or the other. But we want them to know what the projects are that are proposed, we want them to know what the tax impacts of those projects.
Sure.
We don't want to hide those things from them or not make them aware of what they are.
But the other point is, if you draw that, doesn't it have to be just like that when you build it?
It's going to be enough of a.
I mean, it's a concept.
It's going to be a conceptual drawing, it's going to be enough of that to where it's not going to pass down, but it is going to be what we, it is what we intend to build.
Okay. All right. With that, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yeah, yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time of recess, the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number six is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August 20th, 2012. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $749,029.24.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider adopting resolution number 23212, establishing a sanitary sewer recoupment district number 2-12 for approximately 51 acres located in the east half of Section 19, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, for construction of a sanitary sewer lift station and forced mains.
Mayor, council, this item is to provide public sewer to currently undeveloped properties in the general vicinity of Southeast Forest Street and Sunny Lane. The intent is to upgrade a planned lift station that the developer of the Rock Creek addition has for his addition. The city would plan to upgrade that to handle an additional 56 acres of developed sewage and construct approximately 2,000 linear feet of eight-inch gravity mains in order to provide sewage to this additional property. The code does allow for establishment of recoupment districts to basically reimburse the city this cost, and we're asking you to do this basically for two reasons. One, we do want to, if at all possible, consolidate any lift stations that we have. We did know that the developer was going to construct this lift station, he needed it to serve his development, but we also know that all of the other property that is included in this proposal would also have to have a lift station in order to develop. So instead of having several smaller lift stations, we do feel like it would be better to have one bigger lift station. And the other reason why is it does bring these vacant properties that much closer to development if they do have the availability of sewer. It may spur on some development with the current property owners. The total cost of the upgrades to the lift station and the gravity mains is $116, sorry, $116,0353, thank you. And as you can see, and I believe I sent out, or Mr. Eadie sent out, a revised resolution on Friday, perhaps, we do propose to split the recoupment district into two separate portions, and there was a page five to your handout that shows all of this in a, in a map, which may be easier. So we have an A and a B district. The A district is 31 acres, and it does take into account the cost of the lift station and the gravity line, and that will come to a reimbursement to the city of $3,213.43 per acre, and this will be paid to the city at the time of development. Then we have a second recoupment district that I call B, which is actually south of the proposed lift station, and this includes 25 acres, and there is no gravity lines being constructed to serve this property because it doesn't need them. So the cost is much less because I did not take that into account. So the cost for that is only $669.48 per acre, and again, that would be payable back to the city at the time that this property develops. So I've included everything I could think to include in your packet as to how I came up with these numbers, the engineering cost estimates and the construction cost estimates. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I have a couple. The first one, is this, is that a annual payment or when they buy the lot, is it just a one-time payment?
It is a one-time payment, and it's per acre, and it's payable whenever they develop the property. So whenever they file a final plat, I would collect the money and it's handed over to our city clerk.
Okay. Now, the other question I have, that looks like, I, I assume that's Joshua's landing?
This is actually Rock Creek addition, yes.
Okay. Now, across the street, oh, straight across, then down the road, we have two more of these lift stations, but I don't remember doing a impact fee on those.
No, we did not. We rarely use recoupment districts simply because we don't have the opportunity. This was an opportunity that showed itself to us. We've only done one other recoupment district ever, back in the early 2000s.
Who's was that?
Sasan Magodam, and it was a sewer recoupment district off of Southwest 19th Street, yeah.
It's like, I remember doing one, but I couldn't remember where it was.
And it's turned out to be pretty successful. He has almost recouped all of his money now.
On, on this particular one, where we have, I think we have three of those stations? Now, are we going to, are we going to build one to eliminate three? Because that's what he talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah, we won't be able to eliminate any existing lift stations with this. This is really just to prevent having, you know, three or four new lift stations. We can just consolidate them into one.
So the city's still going to have to do the maintenance on those?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know. Because that's what the Eagle guy told us.
Now, there's a, there's a, there's an impact fee per lot for the future maintenance of the lift stations that the developer pays. What you're approving tonight is on top of that. For additional costs, really that the city is determining that needs to be born, needs to be expended now to provide future sewer to yet undeveloped properties, and those might develop tomorrow or it may be 10 years. And the length of this is only 15 years.
You and I agree that we hate lift stations.
Well, we'd rather not have them, but there's a lot of areas out that area particularly that can't be developed. Now, when Satish was here and gave us the report on the main, the big lift station out there on 34th, it's possible that with whatever improvements we choose there, we may be able to eliminate one or two of those lift stations that are out there currently.
That's, that's what I'm.
If that's a separate issue, then the.
Right. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? No, it's called.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time of recess, the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number eight is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August 20th, 2012. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $228,924.54.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time of recess, the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number nine is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There is no one signed up. Anyone like to speak? Come on.
My name is Danny Stoll, and I live in 1104 Northeast 29th Moore. I was here two weeks ago, and I was supposed to be on my docket.
No, sir, none of mine.
Okay. At that time, I gave the city attorney 10 copies of an engineer report too that you guys were all supposed to have to be able to review before we had this meeting so y'all know a little bit about what's going on. I don't have one, sorry.
Who did you, who did you give your information to?
Uh, it was a female lady outside the door here, city attorney, she said.
We don't have female city attorneys.
Okay, because I went through the front desk, and she said, well, you need to take it upstairs, and I said, well, can I hand it? She said, well, I don't know who the lady was, but she was in this room, right outside this door.
We received it, and I think it did go out in, in your mail, I think. I got it. I was, I was. We did receive it.
But when y'all had your last meeting two weeks ago, on Monday, I think, I came in that day, and she said, well, do you want to be on tonight's meeting? And I said, no, 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 I want to wait till September 4th so they got a chance to look at that before we have a meeting. Sorry, I don't have it.
It wasn't my understanding, Danny, that it was to be on the agenda. We, is that my understanding that you were going to be here to discuss it?
Well, she told me that she would put me on the docket so that we would be ready to go.
Well, I, mayor and or, I make those decisions, not whoever it is you spoke to, but again, we're, sorry about that.
Okay. So does anybody have that?
Yeah, we have, I think this is what's in our mail right now. We just got it this evening, I think. We have it in front of us right now.
Okay. Well, I don't know how we're going to review that if, if y'all don't have.
You want to fill us in on what you want to talk about?
I mean, I have a copy of it here if I want to.
Well, we, we have it. It's just, okay.
Put him on the docket.
We can.
Sir, we'd be glad to put you on for the next meeting. I'd be glad to do that.
Well, the problem is, is I'm paying him to be here tonight. Okay. So that he can answer any questions that you guys have off of his documentation that was sent through.
Do you want to give us a summary of what, what's in here?
Well, this is our ongoing problem of about two and a half years now on water damage, drainage from Gabriel's Crossings and Brookstone Villas. The two residential's that's causing problems to my property and a neighbor of mine, which is also here tonight, Mr. Mike Anglin. I've been dealing with Mr. Eadie and Mr. Drake for, like I said, a little over two years, and we can't seem to get anything done on it. We got close to having it dredged last year on the pond, but then I received a letter more or less from the city attorney saying that it was a one-time deal, they would come out, dredge the pond, that would be it, they wouldn't be back out again, and that doesn't fix the spillway. Dredging the pond has to be done, yes, because of the problems we're having, but we also have to have the spillway widened and fixed because that's not going to fix the problems. I give you a brief overview here. I started March sixteenth of this year, called Mr. Drake and asked him if he could get the detention pond at Brookstone Villas cleaned out. He said, yeah, no problem. I called a week later, asked again, yeah, no problem. Third week, same conversation. As of this time, before I came over tonight, it still has not been cleaned out. Now, the city had Brookstone Villas put in a, I don't know if you're calling it a retention or detention pond. I don't know which, which is the correct way, okay, for that new development on Eastern, or Twenty-Nine or Twenty-Seventh Street. But when they did it, they put a concrete base on the bottom of it. And the problem I'm having is that's what's on the concrete. That's why I'm asking you to get cleaned, because that's what my pond ends up looking like when it's not cleaned out. It's been mowed, but it hasn't taken the mud out of it. And so that's where all my silt's coming into the pond. I've got pictures of pond pictures here. Like I said, I, I stood before the City Planning Commission and the City Council two years ago and asked them not to approve Brookstone Villas because I cannot accept more water in this pond. We are already overflowing out the base. And according to your engineer, there wasn't going to be a problem. We should be able to handle the water. Well, we can't handle the water. And what is done, uh, the developer, Dur Marko, when he built our neighborhood Bradford Court, made a concrete sidewalk around part of, about half of the pond. And this only relates to my house and my next door neighbor's house. It's got the sidewalk in concrete wall. The water's overflowing out of the pond, coming into the yard. It's taking all the dirt from behind the concrete. Now the concrete, the sidewalk is falling in. It's got a crack in it and it's just breaking away.
How old are these, something like these?
That was this spring.
The spring?
Yeah. Yeah. That's showing you where the concrete's breaking away. This is on the stem wall where it breaks. And this is the mud that's coming from your Brookstone Villas. The amount of water and the mud. Like I said, Stan and Mr. Edie have both been out there. They came out April this year. We walked the pond, we discussed things. As far as dredging the pond, they agreed with that. As far as the spillway, they wanted to get an engineer to look at it. I never had a response on that. Like I said, I've been going since March of this year again. I laid off a year because I got so mad that I quit. And then I decided, nope, I'm gonna get it done. So I started back in March this year. The last two calls I made to Mr. Drake, it was, is Mr. Drake in? Yes, he is. Can I ask who's calling? Danny Stoll. Okay, one moment. Voicemail. Last two times I got a voicemail, even though she told me he was in. So on June the first, I left him a little tacky message and I told him that, you know, we've been messing since March of this year. It's June the first, you have till June the fifteenth. And all I want is something in paper, on paper, saying, we will fix this and we will do this. Not just our communication between us. And I said, you have till June the fifteenth to get this done, or I guess we'll just let the lawyers take care of it. I never heard a response from him. So I have talked with an attorney and he told me my first step was to hire an engineer and have them come out, look at the pond, assess the damage and what needs to be done, which he's here tonight. I asked him to come so he could answer any questions y'all might have about the three-page document he put out. And my attorney said after that, then I'd have to hire a construction consultant to come out and tell me how much it would cost to fix the wall and all the concrete. After that, I have to file a claim. City has ninety days. After that, lawsuit. So I'm in step one here. I've got the engineer here to answer any questions. But once again, in, in March, when I called Mr. Drake to come out is because it was raining hard that day. And I said, you need to come see this now when this stuff's overflowing. He did come out in the rain. I mean, I didn't see him, but he told me he came out. And he said, Danny, you're not getting that much water from Gabriel's Crossing, or, uh, from Brookstone Villas, where they put that detention pond. And I said, no, I realize that. The water I'm getting's from Gabriel's Crossing. He says, yeah, you're getting a maximum load from Gabriel's Crossing. Well, we found out when Gabriel's Crossings was built, the city took money in lieu of detention on that property up there. The city engineer apparently said that it wasn't needed to have a detention pond. Obviously, this engineer's wrong because we're having all this water damage. The planning commission also told me, uh, on Brookstone Villa, that they were going to divert half of that water to Twenty-Seventh and half of that water to me. You can go stand in the entrance of that neighborhood and all that water's coming to me. I mean, it's sloped that way. You go downhill the minute you hit the neighborhood. So that was wrong. This is just something I wanna show you. This is years ago. This is a tree in my backyard. This is that tree. This is before Gabriel's Crossing. This is before Brookstone Villas was ever put in. If a golf course pond is full and it comes a heavy rain, it overflows, it comes to me. That's the way it's designed, that's the way it's diverted to do. Before Gabriel's Crossing was there, before Brookstone Villas was there, that tree that I'm showing you there is approximately fifteen feet from my back door. That tree is also approximately twenty foot from the pond. And you can see how far it came up in my backyard. And that's before I had these two neighborhoods. The problem I'm having now, I broke two wheels on lawnmower this year trying to mow my backyard. I can't get close to that pond with a mower. I could not, to be honest, I could not sell my house right now until I fix that issue around that pond because somebody would break their leg trying to walk around it. There's holes everywhere. Where the dirt's gone, we don't know. But it is gone. And like I said, we've been doing this for two years and we can't seem to get any answers. So that's why I decided to come back to the council. And like I said, I've got the engineer here that he can answer, you know, any questions y'all might have off of his report.
Well, since he's here, you wanna, does he wanna tell us how the city is responsible? What he, what he found? I mean, he's, he's here. I'm just curious what you, what you found? I mean, I, I haven't been out there, obviously, so just curious on what you think the city.
When I spoke to the lady and gave her the, the copies of all this report, uh, the other day, I, I told her, I said, I welcome anyone to come, you know, and walk my property. There's no dogs or anything in the backyard to look at this. Cause I was trying to get all this set up before we had this meeting so that we could.
Sure, yeah.
Kind of all be on the same page. This is Dean Collet.
Dean Collet, Coop Engineering. Terry and Danny here, Mr. and Mrs. Stoll have hired a, basically hired a company to come out, visually inspect the property, uh, look at the drainage basin, anything upstream to see if, uh, what was causing this flooding and the silting. After, uh, visual inspection and looking at some drainage plans and looking at the drainage basin, we determined that, uh, you know, one, visual inspection, silt was coming from the Brookstone Villas property, their, their pond silted in. The silt fence that are on the single-family lots are not being maintained. It should be holding on each lot that's coming into the pond. Then when it fills up, it comes into the drainage ditch, which ends up in his backyard. So that was where the silting came in. Visual inspection of the, the construction plans of Gabriel's Crossing shows about half, the northern half of the drainage comes into the natural channel there that was natural. Then they, I think the city came out and concrete lined it to help out the erosion, cause there's erosion problems. And no detention was there, so, you know, visually inspecting and looking at the plans and reports and pictures, without detention, you're increasing runoff. Runoff increases, you know, rate of, of flow in your creeks, causes erosion and it causes flooding downstream. That's why it's important to always detain upstream of any type of development. So there's two sources of problems. One is the erosion and the silt coming from the Brookstone Villas project and their detention pond, their detention pond. And then the actual runoff, the extended runoff that should've been held back is coming from the Gabriel's Crossing. And that's kind of what's happening. To fix the problem, you know, essentially to get the silt out, you know, our recommendation to, to Danny, Mr. Stoll was to dredge the pond, to get the silt out. And two, to expand, since you don't have any room to put a detention pond in Gabriel's Crossing, that's been, you know, there's no land to hold that water back anymore, is to expand the outlet structure of the existing pond to help that water get out and go downstream without storing and, you know, building up in the existing pond. So essentially, that's just our observations, you know? There's no, whoever's responsibility is, that's not my job. My job was to look at the, the engineering data, the report, visual inspection based off professional engineering and, you know, our just common standard practice of what I thought the problems were and what the solutions could be. So that's kind of where I was at and then that's where I did the report.
So basically, we just need to dredge it and expand it, make it deeper?
Yeah, to dredge the pond to get the silt out, cause it's built up over time and the volume goes down, so then it makes the problem worse. So if you dredge out the silt that was in there, get the volume to be larger and then you gotta do a drainage calculations and studies to figure out how much additional water's coming to that pond. And then you figure out basically what type of weir structure, how wider you need to make it to be able to pass that water through by maintaining a certain volume and not expanding that volume out. And essentially, once you expand that weir, anything downstream into that existing channel that goes underneath the road and then there's a, I think a concrete channel that goes down the, the other street next to, I think it's Bradford Drive, if I'm not mistaken, then that would probably have to be looked at for, you know, make sure it's the property size so you don't get, you know, flooding on the other side of the road. So, you know, essentially, my, my recommendations are based off visual to really determine the exact, you know, values of, you know, what you need to do and the construction cost, you know, you have to run a report, do existing conditions, drainage study and a proposed conditions to figure out what, what we do to fix the problem, so.
Now, will that keep the silt from coming back?
The silt from coming back, you're gonna need to make sure that the, uh, Brookstone Villas projects, they maintain their erosion control. Their silt fence, you know, they have them up at each lot. But that's basically the intent, to keep the silt from coming in the street and going into the detention pond. If they don't maintain those, that silt just gets by it and causes the pond to build up with silt and just cause problems. So really, it's just the, the developer there needs to maintain, which he should be doing anyway, uh, it's senior code that they have to do that. So he just needs to do, do what's right and maintain his erosion controls, keep silt off the, uh, the public right-of-way and out of the pond and then that would fix that problem. And then, of course, dredging the pond to get rid of what's already there would be the solution of that, so.
But I might also add, Brookstone Villas is almost complete now, as far as each lot. So once that's done and there's grass, you know, in each yard and all that, the silting problem will basically go away as far as the silt we're having right now. It's just been for two years, we just, you know, we keep getting the silt in.
We, we had tentatively agreed to address the weir issue on his pond and to dredge the pond, but in earlier discussions, that wasn't gonna be acceptable, I don't believe, as far as the weir, widening it out or deepening it, lowering it or whatever.
Yeah, we accepted.
We've had those discussions.
We accepted the widening. See, originally, the engineer on staff or that you called, he wanted to drop the spillway down a foot and a half. And I disagreed on that because that drops my water table a foot and a half on the whole pond. And I don't wanna see all that concrete wall. So I asked, why could we not widen the spillway to be double the size it is? And Mr. Anglin's agreed to give up, you know, the ten, fifteen foot of his land there to do that. And why, why would that not be the same solution as dropping the spillway down? Is to widen it to get more volume out?
You'd have to, you could determine that, you just have to do the study to figure out.
I was gonna say, he's the engineer, not me, I couldn't, I couldn't.
Yeah, no, it could, potentially look at the size. It could work for sure. It's just, you know, to keep, I don't know, he wants to maintain that pond elevation, so it's, it's widening, it's the solution.
But, but you are right, we have agreed on some verbal things, but there's been nothing in writing. The only thing I got in writing is when the city attorney got involved and said, we're coming out one time, one time only and you have to sign this paper saying that whatever we do is good and you can't sue us. And I said, no, I won't sign that. Cause you, at that time, we weren't even addressing the spillway. It was strictly dredging the pond and it wasn't fixing my sidewalk and my concrete. None of that was included. I have the letter here. So that's why nothing was done there. That's why this year, since March, when I said I want something in writing telling me what we're going to do and then I never received it, that I took the steps to hire the engineer. Now, the point I'm at tonight is, yes, I've already hired him, yes, I've already paid him. If you guys can accept this report and get something going, it'll be cheaper. If not, and he has to do all the charts and do the, you know, all the black and whites as far as the volume and the flows and all that, it's just going to cost the city more because I'm expecting all this in return because this is not my fault. This was all created by the city, not by myself or Mr. Anglin at all. And when this is done, when this is fixed, as far as dredging, I expect it to be stocked back with fish like it is now because all the fish are gonna die when you go dredging the pond. And I think if the city can spend all the money for Little River to stock that pond for fishing tournaments, then we can replace the fish in my pond. And also, any vegetation, which my backyard's basically grass right up against the wall in that one picture you saw. Mr. Anglin's yard, there's bushes, there's walks, there's gonna be a lot to be replaced on it. All that should be put back to safety.
Steve, how do we, how do we proceed, Steve?
This is not our fault.
What's the one you, Steve, what, Steve, what do you?
Whole lot more to it than we've even talked about here tonight in terms of what we've done upstream. We have relieved some of the water on that property upstream. The gentleman says he's done visual. We've done a lot of engineering on this. We basically have all the information. But I think the rub has been, is that, um, I don't think we think that all the damage to his, the walls of that pond and all of that has been caused by this, these developments upstream. That's been there twenty years, fifteen or twenty years. Your pond and the walls and, and all that. It's, it's been there for a long time.
Yes, the pond has been there for probably forty years as a farm pond. But when Dur did this development of Bradford Court, that's when the pond was redesigned. That's when the pond had the concrete walls added.
Yes.
That's when the spillway was put in. Other than that, it was just a farm pond.
I'm saying that was some time ago, twelve, fifteen years, whatever it was.
It's probably been twelve years ago now, yes.
Well, I mean, I know it was longer than that.
Well, you're right, yeah. It was in the mid. Been there twelve years.
It was in the mid nineties.
Probably fifteen. But the thing is, is there wasn't any problem until we got Gabriel's Crossing.
But it's always been the drainage basin there. All the water from the golf course, all that water upstream has always come across your property.
There's never been water upstream in the street. There was two, there was a pond on the development that Brookstone Villas put in. They wiped that pond out when they made that development over there.
My point is, I think we don't necessarily agree with the extent of damage to that wall. We've been willing to dredge and we've been willing to adjust that, the weir. And I'm saying we would do that now, but as far as rebuilding this pond, I don't think we think that's entirely the city's responsibility.
Okay. So, so we have, obviously, we've looked into it and that engineering work and stuff.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of work that's been done.
This is Mr. Anglin, he is my, um, there's basically two of us that, that this wall concerns. That's, that's why there's only four of us that, uh, water the pond, but there's only two of us this wall concerns, so that's why we're willing to do here.
I just wanna make a few points, uh, talking about the property to widen the spillway. That was continued upon repairing the sidewalk and all my plantings. The only other point I wanted to say is, if it rained real hard tonight and the water from the street undermines your driveway, whose fault would it be? Because that's simply what's happened on our property. Okay? Doesn't matter how long it's been. It's been undermined, just like if it hadn't at your property tonight. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Depends on whether the driveway's in the right-of-way or on your personal property.
Well, I'm saying if it gets up on your property and tears up your property, which is what it did to ours. And it's been like that for a while. It didn't just happen yesterday, it's been like that for quite a while. The sidewalk is about to lay over and edge up.
Randy, can we fix it for him? That's a legal question, I guess, huh?
Without knowing more about this, I can't give you the actual elements about this right now, without, that's, at this point, I'm a management decision. Uh, I need to know more about what has been done upstream, what, you know, the others have done, so I can't give you the rest.
Well, the reason I ask is because he said this is the first step in his lawsuit against the city, so as of that part, it becomes your problem rather than mine, once he says he's doing lawsuit, and you and Steve will have to work this out with him. Since he's missing that, isn't that correct under the charter?
I've been in Moore for forty-eight years, was raised here, owned several houses. I've got a wife teaching school, got a son that's next door over at Central Junior High as a coach and a teacher. I mean, I'm, this is not something I wanna do, believe me.
I'm just trying to figure out how to fix it.
And that's why I prolonged for two years, but it's just to the point that I feel like I'm being railroaded and we're not getting anything done.
And I'm trying to help you, but I have a lot of landmines to walk through, so to speak, on this, because I don't wanna be in violation of the charter, I don't want my city council to be in violation of the charter, I, you know.
What I think would be beneficial is, and again, I apologize for the delay here, but I think it'd be beneficial if you all could go out and look, if you like. We can come up with a drawing and some maps that show what all we're talking about here, show the drainage basin. We've already done a lot of work out there. And Stan's been out there a dozen times, I know, at least in the last two or three years, and every, every rain when it rains. And has a lot of information on this. I think we can give you a better understanding of what's out there, what has happened over time, when it happened, and all that, and we can do that at the next meeting.
I would like maybe for somebody to look at this engineering report from the city.
Sure.
That is, and look at it and give their opinion and thoughts on it.
I read through it, and from what the gentleman said there, as far as his observations, that the weir needs to be taken care of and needs to be dredged. We don't disagree with that.
Right.
There's other issues that the gentleman's concerned with as far as damage to the property that needs to be determined.
And I definitely wanna come out there and look at it and read through this myself, and, you know, we just got this tonight, so I haven't had it. I'm just getting hit with all of this at once, so.
You're welcome. Like I said, anyone's welcome anytime to come out there and walk it and see what it looks like.
And I want you to understand that we want to do what's right here, you know, it's not us against you. We just have a responsibility to make sure the taxpayer dollars get spent.
Well, I realize that, but, you know, you need to look at my vantage point, that I've been dealing with this for over two years.
Oh, I understand, I can say your breakthrough.
And granted, yes, Mr. Drake's been out there a dozen times. What's happened? Nothing.
Set them on out.
I don't think that's exactly true.
But, you know, in two years.
We've done a lot of work out there north of you, upstream.
Nothing's been done on my property, Mr. Eady.
On your property, okay.
That's what I'm asking for.
There's been a lot of work done out there, there's been a lot of money spent by the city upstream from there.
Yeah, the city came out last year-
To reduce the amount of water.
And put the concrete drainage for my neighbors.
We also did work on the golf course property.
Yeah.
North of there, we pulled a tin horn out that effectively reduced the amount of water coming off of the golf course through your property by half. We created a tension facility on the golf course property that wasn't there before, so we have to have the whole story out here, not just part of the story.
I agree with you there, but everything you just said, all that was done. We've been in a drought for two years. That golf course hasn't came to me, and you can see by my pictures what water I have coming out of my banks in the spring without the golf course even coming to me. So everything you've done at the golf course might be great in the future when it overflows, but it's not the issue right now. It's Gabriel's Crossing that's creating this problem that we're showing. Yes, you've done a lot of work up there, I agree, you have, and you put the concrete channel in our bardsage, which is great for my neighbors, 'cause now they can mow, there's no erosion. What's that do for me? It brings the water to me faster. That's all it does. It channels it in one nice spot and brings it to me faster. But everything that's done on the golf course doesn't affect what happened last year. That's all Gabriel's Crossing. I mean, the pictures show the flooding that I'm having.
Well, he'll get the information to us and we'll all look it over and talk about this. Are you gonna try and put this on the agenda, so we can talk about it then, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll talk about it next week or two weeks?
Two weeks. Can I get those back?
Anybody else? Guy was good, I wouldn't even afraid to say that. All right. Item B is items from city councilor trustees.
I have one, Jerry, just good to have you back.
Two weeks.
Water power is by the first batch church of Moore. I'm understanding that the cell towers that are on top of it are no longer being used, is that?
They've submitted documentation to us to ask to terminate the lease, so, yeah. I don't know whether they're in use today or not, but they are not going to be in use, yes.
Will the, does the city try to sell that or market that, or is it just if somebody's interested, they would contact us? Say, "Hey, we would like to lease the top of the tower."
We've not ever really marketed it. Whenever there was a pretty huge expansion of those, they were coming to us left and right. But we've not ever really marketed it as far as it is.
So you don't, if somebody comes to the city, then we consider it, but you're not going out looking for somebody to?
Yeah, I wouldn't, we don't know, we really even know who to, other than just the major carriers, of course. But, yeah, I think it is, that lease is terminated.
Anybody else? Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Just a couple of items. I'd like Steve Hoffner to come forward, Stan, if you can pass those out. Steve is our traffic engineer, and his company is the one who designed the traffic signals at Fifth and I-35. And there's been some questions about that, and so we asked Steve to come in, and he's got his bulletproof vest on underneath his shirt there that gives you an understanding of how that's supposed to work and what's the rationale behind the way it was developed.
Thank you, Stan.
And then he's gonna give us a real quick update on our timing and our getting all the traffic signals on Nineteenth Street to operate together, so.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, Mr. Eady asked me to come in this evening and explain the way and what for the traffic signal is operating at the intersections of I-35 Telephone Road and northwest Fifth Street. There are, the traffic signal equipment's a pretty sophisticated piece of equipment nowadays, and there's a lot of different ways that you can operate intersections that are very closely spaced. In this particular case, we've got three intersections that are closely spaced, and as a result, we look at the traffic volumes to determine whether we can stack traffic in between those intersections. The first sheet that I have on the diagrams has a red hatched area, and those are the two areas where we would want to keep the traffic cleared out of that area if at all possible. In the calculations, what we look at is turning traffic, if they fill up the middle, for example, underneath the bridge between the two I-35 ramps, and at a number of times during the day, it would fill those areas up if we did not phase the signals such that we could keep those areas clear. Obviously, the short distance between the Telephone Road and the southbound I-35 Frontage Road is so short that there's no way you could stack traffic in there. What I did then on subsequent diagrams is to show the various movements of traffic through the intersection and where they could potentially turn. The diagrams are also in order of how the signal is currently operating. For the second figure two, eastbound traffic has, could turn at Telephone Road, I-35, southbound Frontage Road, or the I-35 northbound Frontage Road. And so what we do with the traffic signals is, once they make one signal, is we allow them then to continue on through the other intersection on a green light. I'll come back and show you one other thing in just a minute. Then Telephone Road is the second one in sequence, and again, we've set the traffic signals up such that they can clear the I-35 ramp on the east side of the intersection. The next one is the southbound I-35 ramp, and they've got several different options. You can see how complicated those movements can potentially be. They could go straight on the Frontage Road, or they could make a right turn and then a quick left turn on Telephone Road. That's why that intersection needs to be kept clear. Or they can turn left, and that movement is fairly heavy, especially during peak hour and at some other hours of the day. Figure five, then, is the westbound direction coming underneath the bridge, and they can turn left at either the south Frontage Road or on Telephone Road. And then the final movement is the eastbound, I'm sorry, the northbound Frontage Road. Again, if they make the left turn, they clear both of the intersections. One of the reasons that the signal is phased this way is that the reward for having to wait just a little bit of extra time, because we're sequencing each one of these as they go through the intersections, is that once you do get a green light, you're able to clear all the other intersections. You don't have to, for example, on this last diagram, turn left and then come up to the southbound Frontage Road and stop and wait until you have the opportunity to go through there. It's also a bit of a safety reason for doing that. There can be some driver expectancy that they'll have the green light there, and if they don't have the green light there, then they can potentially run through those traffic signals. So there is, obviously, when you sequence through an operation like that, there is a little extra time that individuals have to wait. But once they get the green light, then they're able to clear through all of the intersections. The signal is set up, if you'll flip back, for example, on figure five, for both east and west, and I'll just explain the westbound direction. When the figure four shows you that the southbound ramp is right before the westbound movement, the way that the traffic signal is phased is we look at how much traffic is on that southbound ramp, and we go ahead and start the westbound through movement when we are able to determine when the southbound traffic's gonna get, so that they actually get the green light, and that southbound ramp stays on until such time as they approach that intersection, then they get the green light. And that same thing is true on the eastbound direction to add to the efficiency. We have continued to tweak the traffic timings out there, it's not an exact science. I even went back there this evening to watch it, and it's got to adjust to all different types of patterns, and we're trying to make it as efficient as possible. I believe that, one other thing, the, what I think where most of the complaints are coming is that the east side or the northbound ramp, they don't see what's going on over on the west side, and they don't see the potential cars coming to them, and so they assume that there's a lot of dead time or delay time in that traffic movement. We could make a slight change to it, but again, I think that it's more of a safety issue, and my preference would be to leave it phased the way that it is and continue to work on the signal timing. And I think over time, the complaints will come down and it, the efficiency of the intersection, the safety of it will override some of the delay out there.
You don't know our citizens, do you?
I, I do know what you're talking about.
Well, yeah, and you're right, that's, I've been there twice, and it seemed like it was twenty minutes with no cars crossing the direction, you know, and so. But it makes sense looking at your picture here, though, I mean, that's a complicated area.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you're right, that's the area that I think would be the area that would get the, it gets the most complaints.
Do you know what the time, what you, what you can have on that northbound?
Yeah, it's probably the whole thing will cycle in about a hundred and twenty seconds, which is fairly normal for a major intersection. We run them at about a hundred and twenty second cycle, but it seems like a long time, 'cause you're sitting on it.
Are you sure about that?
But I timed this the other night, and that was about what I timed it.
Yeah. Last week, we made, last week, it was cycling longer than that, and I made some changes last week, and I've cut it down.
Yeah, 'cause it was about twenty minutes last time.
All right, you got me there. Any other questions on that intersection?
Is there any way that we could put a big blow-up right next to the intersection so people see why we're doing this?
Blow-up of these diagrams?
Yes.
Each page.
Hey, thank you very much, appreciate it.
They would just look at it and say, you know, the cars only go the same way they went before we did it. They go the same direction.
Safer? Have there been any, I mean, what was it like before all of this, accident-wise?
There weren't any wrecks there, anyway. If a four-way stops, two people have to make, I always say, two people have to make a mistake at a four-way stop, and it really did, the safety record was pretty good prior to that. We don't know, it'll take some time, we usually look at about a year's worth of history.
Probably clears that area out quicker, though, that east-west.
Yeah, the southbound in the evenings and in the mornings, there's some approaches that are very heavy, and it's, they may not think it, but they are getting through there faster than that.
That deal with Telephone Road, that was always tricky to maneuver your way through there. I mean, that was not a good deal.
The local knowledge helped the safety record there, because it was a little bit unorthodox.
What's your philosophy on roundabouts?
I think that they have a very good application in a lot of different areas. Where we still have a bit of a challenge are on real heavy intersections where you have to have two lanes coming in. They've worked in some locations throughout the United States with two-lane approaches, but if we have traffic that we can narrow it down to a single lane, they're very efficient and have a great safety record too. They're a little less pedestrian-friendly.
I've lived in England for several years and was a big fan of roundabouts. We're going back in a couple of weeks, so I may come back with the new, new fever for roundabouts.
Great, great.
We're still actually looking for an application here and more, that a roundabout would work on.
They're really a good application for in front of schools, where there's a lot of traffic going one way and a lot of traffic coming out the other way. So we may think about that for our next schools that go in.
Unless you drive on one and you've never been on one before.
They're, they're easy.
I've been to New Zealand, and the first couple we hit, I wasn't sure we were driving the right direction.
They're like a four-way stop where nobody stops. It's a four-way yield. That's the best way to explain them.
It's a bit of an aside, but up in Colorado at Breckenridge and Vale and some of those interstate ramps that come off, and you've got very directional traffic, they put them in there, and it has resolved significant issues with those. But this is not those locations, there are places here that they would work quite well.
Maybe we can research that. Thank you.
Just a little bit of note there on Nineteenth.
Real quick on Nineteenth Street, we've got the traffic signals along Nineteenth, we've been limping along. What happens is, we put, we can put coordinated timing into those intersections, but unless they have continual communications between the intersections, they've got time clocks in them that are supposed to be fairly accurate, but they drift over a course of a month or two. And if they get five to ten seconds out, then all of a sudden, your coordination doesn't look as good anymore. We've been in the process here in the last month or two to do two things, is to get the communications link repaired, and I think we're within a week or two of having that resolved. And also to get a telephone drop-in where we have the master that's controlling all those intersections, so that we'll be able to communicate from our office and check them even on a daily basis to see if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. There's one other issue at Fritz, they got some loop problems there, and the city has made the decision to go with video detection. The equipment's ordered, it'll take about thirty days to get that in. We've done all the new counts, we've developed the new patterns, and we'll be implementing those probably in the next thirty to forty-five days to help with coordination along Nineteenth Street. In the meantime, we'll try to keep them in step to the best that we can.
That'll go from Nineteenth and Broadway all the way over to Santa Fe or to Fritz?
Well, I think Stan said it, we've got it clear to Santa Fe, so if we could get communications there, we'll make it all the way to Santa Fe.
So hopefully, within the next thirty to forty-five days, we'll have that all linked up all the way through there. You know, I'm not promising Rose Garden either, but it's gonna be better.
Yeah, 'cause the close proximity of the intersections, but it's definitely, you can tell a difference when those signals are working together and when they're not.
You can also tell the difference when a motorcycle cop's sitting out there.
Yeah.
Everybody seems to obey it a lot better.
They do a good job of enforcing it. Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Item ten is a journal.
Do more things, Mayor, a couple more things quickly, I'm sorry. First off, I wanted to just introduce you all to Greg Herbster. Greg is gonna be assuming that- Greg is gonna be assuming the position of our deputy chief in the fire department. Greg's been with the department about twenty-two years now, a Moore High School graduate, uh, done well. He's, uh, advancing from a major's position, uh, taking Gary's position as the deputy chief now that Gary stepped in, stepped in the chief's position. So we're, uh, happy to have him and excited about his promotion and his leadership in the department. And Dieter's got a quick announcement.
Okay, super quick, we won, we just keep winning all these awards. So we won, of course, the seventy-seventh best place to live from, uh, Money Magazine, so that's exciting, it's gotten a lot of publicity. And then we also won the chance to have K O C O five back here for their on-the-road tour next week. So they will be here all day on Thursday, September the fifteenth. And we will start them out at the library and then we will have a huge lunch for them. And you will all be invited, as soon as I make up those invitations, I will get them to you. They just announced the winners like two days ago, so we just found out like about two days ago. Um, then we will go to the senior center, we will visit, um, the firefighters as they are preparing for their second, or like, well, they're, they've been doing Sand Express for many, many years, but, um, in conjunction with the community, there will be a poker run, um, that leaves from Fort Har- Thunder Harley. So we're gonna visit them and help them get ready for that. And then we will visit the food pantry at Moore High School. And then we will be at Moore High Stadium all evening on Thursday, September the thirteenth, um, for live broadcasts at five and six. So we want the entire community to come out and I will keep all of this posted up on the website the minute it becomes absolutely official and the minute these people know that we're coming. And that I order the food for the lunch and all. So anyway, it's gonna be kind of a tight schedule, but we're gonna make it happen, it's gonna be a great day. So that is next Thursday, September the thirteenth.
Thanks. All right, now item ten, Mrs. Irmer.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Gabbler?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we're in there, thank you.